So I call the meeting to order on January 26th at 6:00 PM. And adopt the minutes, be it resolved that the meeting be called to order and that the agenda for the meeting be adopted as circulated. Could I have a mover please?
A mover, Mr. Mayor.
I have five seconds yet. I call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any, all opposed? None, carried. Addenda to the agenda, there are two. One is for planning and hearing, Mike needs, would like to make a comment, and...
I'm sorry, what was that?
For the hearing, planning, planning hearing, Mike wants to make a comment about the last hearing.
So I can speak to that, Mr. Mayor?
We got a, wait, and, under section, on the in-camera, there's a personnel item that we need to discuss. Can I have a mover please?
I'll move that, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Councilor, Councilor Buscetti moves. Okay, so now we go to number five.
You have to call for the question?
Oh, call for the question?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, carried. Okay, go to five then.
And where is...
Open your remarks?
Where are you going to be speaking on your, or you know?
Number, number five, A.
Number five.
So just welcome everybody to come here tonight for the delegation and for exchange group for coming and our visitors. Thank you for coming and we'll carry on. Now we go down to number five, planning hearing.
Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I wanted to, I was asking the mayor to see if we could speak about general discussion on subdivision S-22, 2965, which was the, you know, special meeting on January the 19th to discuss a rezoning and subdivision. I just, we ran out of time, Mr. Mayor, and so thank you very much for indulging me to allow and to also my council colleagues for allowing me to speak on this. I just want to say a few words, like I said, we ran out of time, it was 10:29, we had to make a decision. And I was like, normally, I'd like elected officials should have an opportunity to say something if they so choose regarding planning matters when they vote on it. So we ran out of time, and so I just wanted to say, with regards to the subdivision, I supported it just based on the information. I want to thank all, all the folks who came out, both for and against the application. I want to thank the developer and the applicant submitting the proposed development, just in light of what we, what we heard. You know, the developer and the applicant were able to demonstrate, in my opinion, anyways, that they were consistent with the secondary plan. They worked within the confines of the secondary plan, which was a process in and of itself several years, several years back. So the developer was working within that. He also recognized that there were some heritage resources on the land and undertook a heritage resource impact report, which was part of the application. And also the applicant and developer, you know, took the necessary steps to have a couple of public engagements. And I was pleased to hear that they incorporated a few of the suggestions from the, from the surrounding residents who participated. Also after the presentation by the applicant, you know, I was really happy and confident to hear that there was going to be architectural standards as part of the development as homes get built in the, in the area, as well as landscaping standards and deposits that home builders have to put down to ensure that they meet the landscaping requirements of the area. Adjacent to the south also, there's a, there is another development, River's Edge. I was happy to hear that developer and the applicant were very open. And I know that our council colleague, Councilor Buscetti moved the resolution that we all support, or that was supported by council to make sure that there's no access to River and Drive, and it's just emergency access only, so happy to hear that. And that's, that was a request from the residents as well. And just finally, I think this, this development, I think will be a good development. It still has to come back to council, Mr. Mayor, for a subdivision plan approval, or pardon me, a lot approval. So there's another opportunity for the applicant and developer to come back to us. So I just want to put those high-level words and my reasons for supporting the application because we didn't have the time at our meeting last week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we move down to, let's see, number six, regular planning district activity report.
Just for information?
Yes, this is for information. That's for November 22nd, the application was, see, the activity report, also for information. Go down to number seven, confirmation of minutes. The minutes from December 20th. Be it resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council be held on December 20th, be approved. Could I have a mover please? Councilor Buscetti moves, can I have a second or, Councilor Camp... Councilor Campbell seconds it. Any questions, comments? Oh, wait, that's right, any questions, comments? None? Okay, can I call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carried. Next on the agenda is 7.2, the special meeting of January 6th. Be it resolved that the minutes of the special meeting on, of council held on January 6th be approved? Can I have a mover please?
I'll move that, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Backpack Camp moves, can I have a second or, Councilor Campbell seconds it? Any questions? See none, I call for the vote, for the questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? None, carried. 7.3, committee of the whole meeting on January 10th. Resolution be it resolved that the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of council held on January 10th, 2023 be approved? Could I have a mover please?
I'll move.
Well, Councilor Campbell moves, Councilor Buscetti seconds it. Any comments? None, could I call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Carried. Let's see, now we're on quite a lot of minutes.
Special meeting?
7.4.
7.4, thank you, Mr. Councilor Campbell, 7.4. Be it resolved that the minutes of special meeting of council held on January 10th, 2023 be approved? Could I have a mover please? Councilor Buscetti moves, can I have a second or? Councilor Campbell seconds it. Any comments? See none, could I call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None, carried. So that brings us down to number eight, delegation. Wayne Paulway, and, oh yeah, and Dave Ingram, Seven Oaks School Division. Can you come forward please, state your name?
Wayne Paulway, 255 Minnehaha Avenue, West St. Paul Trails Group.
I'm David Ingram, and I actually am a West St. Paul resident, 88 Addis Avenue, for only about the last 30 years.
So...
So I'm a newcomer.
Oh, you're a newcomer?
Yeah.
You're welcome.
But I'm also principal at West St. Paul School.
Oh yeah, okay, that's good. So you have something to share with us?
Yes, please. I got something way at the last minute, and I emailed it over to Wayne, I might be sure he's able to...
I have it, you can go up.
Oh, perfect.
Can we make a favor?
So this is something we created
Thank you.
as our volunteer trail group about 20 years ago. If I can hand them out to you, you have copies here too, it's easier for you then. And it just covers different things from our trail group.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I just wanted to go over this briefly before we get into the main topic of why both the trail group and the Seven Oaks School Division is present today. Our mission, to connect the entire West St. Paul Trails Committee or community by the establishment of a recreational trail system. Goals and objectives, to enhance the connections between residential, recreational, and business areas within the community of West St. Paul. And to supply all neighborhood children and youth with a safe and active alternate mode of transport to schools, friends, and activities. As I go on, it talks about to promote physical activity, well-being, to provide all citizens with greater access to public green space, and to encourage a sense of community pride, to use the tool as a, to use the trail system as a tool for environmental education, to preserve historic sites, and to identify and provide local amenities for public use. So I can talk a little bit more about the trails, but I'll also allow Dave to talk on behalf of the Seven Oaks School Division. Because what, what we're here today for is we, we love having a divided highway section, but what happened is we lost part of our trail system. The very first trail system we built was 2005 constructed. And that goes from the West St. Paul School on the west side of Main Street, south to Grassmere Road. So when that was constructed in 2005, we, we, it was just a good feeling to get that started. And that's a section we lost. We lost part of it because of the divided highway section. And we believe there's alternative ways that we can have it rebuilt, and we'd like to discuss that with you today. But what I'll do is I'll hand that over to Dave and let him talk about the Seven Oaks School Division concern.
Thanks, Wayne. Every school has an emergency plan. You probably have an emergency plan for this building as well. We meet regularly, at least once a year, often more than that, with Fire Captain Kerry Echols of the West St. Paul Fire Department. In constant consultation with the fire department, our school's safety plan includes that trail. In an emergency situation, when we need to get our students away from the building to a place as safe and as quickly as possible, that's our route. Our place of safety is the West St. Paul Curling Club. It's the largest and closest spot to accommodate our school in an emergency. The quickest way to the Curling Club is down the former trail on the west side of the highway. In an emergency, walking through a parking lot with multiple agencies reporting to the school would be dangerous and traumatic for kids. When we exit our building, for any fire alarm, our kids head to the, to the playground, which is to the south of the parking lot of the school. After we meet there and we count our kids, if there's an emergency where, a true emergency where we need to get away from the building, we're coming down the west-hand side of the highway. By the time we count our kids, in a real emergency, the parking lot will be loaded. Fire trucks, we'll have the city police there. We have city police liaison officers in our school division, we'll have three of them here, we'll have the RCMP, there will be fire trucks, ambulance. It'll be loaded. And should there be a petroleum spill of some sort, or a fire, having our kids walk through a potentially carcinogenic genetic situation through the parking lot, through these emergency vehicles, and crossing at Minnehaha, walking down the east side of the highway, and then crossing a second time here, will take 10, at least 10 minutes longer. And we all know that these emergency situations don't happen on June 11th when it's plus 20. They're going to happen in February when it's minus 35. We need to get kids here as quickly as possible, and when I say here, I mean to the Curling Club here. As it stands right now with that section of the trail missing, I walked it earlier last week or this week. Halfway down, we come to a dead end at somebody's driveway, and we're going to have to have kids walking on the highway to get here. If there's an emergency at our school, everyone driving by the school is going to be turning their head to see what's going at the school and not watching for kids on the highway. And we've got 600 people that we need to get here safely. And walking on the highway isn't ideal. So in an emergency, we need that trail. That's the primary reason. But there's other reasons. Because our kids, and I think you all, well, you probably all know, we don't take kids from out of catchment area. If you don't live in West St. Paul, you can't come to West St. Paul School. We're full. We all know we're full. We just opened two portables. It's a community school. Our kids regularly for phys ed head to Sanova for baseball or soccer, or to have tournaments. Yeah, we get them to open up the canteen, and the kids love the freezies, but we use Sanova Center. Oh, sorry, Access Center. Our kids bike ride from the school to Accie Center. Again, crossing the highway or driving on the highway is less ideal than having a pathway or network to get there. But our kids regularly bike there too. With our community growing, I'm not sure what the name of your development is around Access Center, I just call it the Sanova Development. More and more kids there are going to be able to walk or bike ride to school if there's a path on the west side of the highway. The parents aren't going to send them across at the lights here and then across at the lights in front of the school. In order to be safe, they've got to walk along the west side of the highway. At the school, we are encouraging active transportation for all the kids and the families, just like across our country, we're trying to do that. We want to make our, our communities accessible to people without having to take their cars. So for us, reinstalling this trail right now will make it safer for kids and safer for us at the school.
I wanted to share also a map that I'd sent that shows the trails of, within our community of West St. Paul. And if it's too small to see, I have copies here too, but as you can tell, the red is the active trails right now. So we are covering, we are connecting our communities together, and that was always our goal from 20 years ago when we started the trail, plus 20 years. But now that we have that little link missing from the school to Grassmere, that has to get resolved somehow. So I don't know if you would like pictures of this too, or you already have access to this? If not, I can email them to you, these trails.
I've got it, Bobby.
Okay.
I'm sure Councilor Buscetti has a copy too.
I can even.
Yeah.
I can see that.
Yeah. Our, our goal is eventually to go over McPhillips too, that'll be more of a long-term plan. And then go further west all the way to the Key Center and tie in all that Toshack and Fenida and Moore section also. So it'll be a safe area for the west part of West St. Paul to get over to the east side, where our school exists, our community center exists. So long-term plans for that. So, David already covered all the things about the safety of the students. We also, just in the last week, spoke to a couple of residents that reside. There's a total of eight homes heading north from this building here, then an empty lot, and then two more homes, then the Seven Oaks School Division property. Of those eight homes, I know one of the gentlemen there, I didn't realize that, I knew he had bought another house for his son, but he also has his in-laws two doors over also too, so he's a homeowner of three. And I believe he had emailed all of you a couple of days ago. Bridgette was her name, that, his spouse, his commonwealth spouse. So she just covers about, they have a 12-year-old son that has to go to school there also too, so his concern is the safety part. And I also spoke to the very first resident, Scott Stanley, who resides one home over from here. His mother lives next door to him. And again, very positive on getting that trail rebuilt. A proposal that we can maybe bounce off you, different ways of how we can do this is, example, in front of Monte Carlo dealership on the east side, that ditch was filled in, so it's not a deep ditch section there. So when the ditch was filled in with the piping underground, it allowed us to rebuild a trail on the east side. So we have our trails to go north and south. So we're proposing maybe do the same thing on, on the west side over here, that, of the trail section we lost. Currently, in front of the RM office, that ditch has also been filled in, just like it was in front of Monte Carlo dealership. And the first two homes also here were filled in. So that section there would be an easy no-brainer because we would be easy to put a trail on, on that section. But the only concern is now going further north, there's about three or four more homes that doesn't have that access. So we're not too sure how to approach that, so we need guidance from the RM. When we first built this first trail section in 2005, we actually went, in 2002, 2003, we knocked on everybody's door on these 10 homes along here and said what we're proposing to do. At that time, we had zero trail systems in West St. Paul, and very positive. Of all the 10 homeowners, some of whom pretending they're pulling their wallet out of the back pocket, saying, how much can I donate? When can we start? Can I get my shovel ready? We should in this years ago, so very positive. I'm not too sure if the same homeowners are here 20 years later, but of the five that, of the 10 that I spoke to so far, they are positive about it. And they said that neighbors on either side of them were very positive, so it could be up to a seven positive out of the 10. So I don't know if it's up to the RM to approach these, or if you would like us as a volunteer group again to knock on doors and propose to see how we can rebuild again for the section that's missing.
Got any questions, council?
I, I was just going to consult with acting CEO. Do you, do you know, you know, is that something that we would want, a volunteer group to pick on? Or is that something more the RM would do, or?
I, I think next steps would be council discussion, and, and we, with our council rep on the trails group, could, could discuss who to contact the residents, I think it would be a municipal responsibility.
Thank you.
Councilor Buscetti, yes?
As Mr. Paulway stated, the part that was extended on Main Street on the east side, that was, the problem is now we're on MI's property. And they're a lot more, I was going to say stringent, because it's a lot closer to the highway now than it used to be. That section took, I think it was almost eight months to get approval from MI. And then there was still, the RM still had to get easements from further properties to the south of that. So it, it's not a get it done like this, just all changed. But I think an important thing to remember is, the next 10 homes down Main Street, Highways is talking about, you know, keep on going with this. So I think it, it would be in the best favor of all of us, because I don't think anyone on this table is against putting the trail back in there. But it's getting MI in the room with us, and actually making a plan before they go to start to save those trail systems or incorporate them into their plans. Because it's, as we're, as we're working with, you know, RM money, at the same time, we have to worry about, we're putting this in, I don't want to see them six months later tearing it all out, as they've done in previous ones. Because the plans, well, you've seen them, and it changed 10 times in the summer. Just on this highway, all of a sudden, they put a light standard in the middle of the trail system or a manhole. So I think the sooner we get in touch with them and have them in the table with us as a group of all of us, the...
We've got that lined up for tomorrow.
George, actually, tomorrow, we're meeting at the school with the Highways guy, Superintendent Larry, myself, Tiffany, Winchar, we're meeting to, to share, first of all, how they're going to get in and out of the school parking lot, because there's some changes that have, have to happen in the full school parking lot. But absolutely on that agenda is, we need to do something to try and maintain or rebuild the trail, because they need to know this is how, we, this is how we get to our safe spot in an emergency. You, you all know, there's nowhere for us to go. Going north, there's the Candle Factory. That's not going to handle 600 kids. This is our spot to go. They need to be aware of that. I don't know if they were aware of that when they started this project.
I think this project changed about six or seven times just in the time that they were doing it, so. And as we all, as Wayne was saying, they filled the ditch. But you told me they had to fill the ditch to put small, wider soil. It, it kind of defeated what I, we all thought was going to be happening.
We'll be sharing that this is our emergency route.
I also spoke to Mamtaz Habib from MI a couple nights ago, and he's going to be in attendance, I believe, tomorrow too, at the school division. Amazing person to talk to. If you guys ever had a chance to talk to him, if you've ever spoken to him, very positive, very enlightening. And, and he knows the priority, not that it's a different priority for the east side when that was done, but he knows what the concern is on this side for the safety issue with the school and their emergency plan. We also have spoken to a resident on Grassmere Road. His name is Ken Azaransky. He's the emergency coordinator for the RM. And he got approval from Brent Olenek to also speak too. So I don't know if he's available right now or not, just to do a quick statement so you guys can also hear too his concern.
Yes, Mr. Azaransky is available on Zoom. I don't know, Ken, if you want to turn on your monitor and, and speaker?
Are you talking to us?
Yeah, I got my microphone, microphone on, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm out, I'm out and about chasing kids around in hockey arenas, so I found a little quiet corner to join you guys. I felt this was an important topic to weigh in on. And yes, I, I've listened to the delegation, and I think Mr. Ingram, the principal of West St. Paul articulated it perfectly. This is, when, when you consider a time of emergency and the need to get a number of kids, obviously ranging from five to 13 years old, from a chaotic situation to a place of solitude or sanctity to try to regain composure, to consider an option of crossing a four-lane highway that carries, you know, I, I don't have the numbers, but I would have to assume approximately 10,000 cars a day wouldn't be an option to even consider. This, this trail system and this, this, I know the delegation talked about this trail existing since 2005. That was just part of the formal trail system. I would suggest that the west side trail down Main Street has existed for probably the better half of a century. So the removal of this really has impacted the residents of the community. Certainly, the, the way that that is used by the school and accessing the Curling Club is completely unacceptable from an emergency standpoint. With that being considered, it, you know, if I was to use it as the largest factor, that's obviously it. But you've got to get this, this group to a place of safety, as safely as possible. You're not looking to create secondary emergency scenes in a crowded highway moving, again, these kids. It's, it's not the grade eights that you're worried about, certainly, they're still children, but you're, you're dealing with a multitude of, you know, kids under 10 years old that need specific guidance and control and accountability. And without that west side sidewalk, I really don't know how it's going to happen unless they shut down the highway altogether, which, knowing the RCMP resources, knowing the City of Winnipeg Police resources, is not going to happen. Not going to happen in the timeframe that is required. So, you know, I, I would, I would speak in favor of council's consideration of seeing how viable this is and working through whatever means to have it constructed, obviously. To do it now would be a huge expense, and that has to be considered. But from an emergency preparedness standpoint, it goes without saying this needs to be done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilor?
Just a couple of questions. Thanks for your presentations, by the way, and your advocacy for the trails. Just two questions I have is, number one, did the RM originally pay for the trail installation? And then number two, I just have one question, then I have a statement after that, so can you answer that?
Sure, yes. I thought I turned this off, so sorry, guys. My apologies. 2005, at that time, right, if I can give you a little bit more of a story about this one. Currently, Brent Olenek is a very good advocate for our trail group. Trail members are just all volunteers, residents. Brent Olenek and Dave Romano have taken it underneath their wings to do the expansion. The first section we did, we, we did the tenders and stuff like that as the volunteer group. We found somebody who was a school, or a bus driver from the city of Winnipeg who's got Bobcat service on the side, and he's able to construct the trail for us along this side here. And during that time, so in 2005, the cost of that was not from the volunteer group, it was from the RM. So they paid for that bill. And, but as a volunteer group, we're so pleased that we're finding it in trail section. We were there bringing them sandwiches, coffee, donuts from Tim Hortons and stuff, just to, as a, as a positive thing. Year after year, after that, we did get then the west side done, and we got it within the perimeter, going from Riverdale South to the city Winnipeg limits, we were able to get those sections done. And it was mostly the trail members at that time as a volunteer group getting the tendering. After that, then Brent Olenek came on board, and Dave... After that, then Brent Olenek came on board and Dave Romano, and then they ran with it and got us all the way north, almost to St. Andrews now, and going west towards the west part of West St. Paul. But we also, sorry, one more topic on that. We actually went, it's who you know sometimes with certain things. So we were able to get gravel donated as a cost savings for us taxpayers here in West St. Paul. So we had gravel donated one year, we had the Geotech donated another year, so different cost savings. And again, everyone had a grant application submitted through community places. We met with a gentleman from Gimli, filled out applications so it'd be a cost sharing. So they've covered 50% of the cost.
So I'm working with advocacy and great connections, so I have to be. Second follow-up question. When the province of Manitoba was looking at, or when MI was looking at expanding the highway there, did they come talk to you, the RM, or to you guys?
In 2002, 2003, 2004, we had MI at our meetings as a volunteer group, we'd have them attend. And at that time, we had no access centers, so no the center. So we met either upstairs here or one of our homes in our basements. So we actually had MI appear at one of our homes at one time, also two in attendance. We had a meeting downtown with them. And we always had to get the approval from MI since it's on their highway right-of-way.
Right.
And...
But was the disappearance of the trail a surprise?
Yes.
It was a surprise?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So in that case, then maybe my comment to you then is that when you do meet with the infrastructure representatives, just I'd like to certainly hear from my perspective. And I'd like to hear back in terms of what their plan is, in terms of remedying the situation, because it sounds like there was a lot of volunteer effort, a lot of coordination from the RM, dollar spend from the taxpayers to make this trail happen. And, you know, sorry to hear that was a surprise. I'd like to hear what they have to say in terms of a plan to sort of remedy the situation.
Yes, thank you.
Some of, one of the letters that you did get from one of the homeowners along the strip here, I believe you all received the emails on that, Bridgette. It mentioned that it was a surprise for them too. Residents right there.
Having said that, we're definitely gonna work with you and MI to resolve it. But I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Counselor?
Mr. Ingram, question for you. What is your emergency plan right now, now that you don't have the trail? What are you doing for emergency plan?
We walk on the highway. We have no choice.
So you don't use a crosswalk and go across?
We wouldn't be able to do that, because when the fire trucks get into the parking lot, they would be there before we would make the decision to go. We would have to find out what the emergency is. There was one that happened, maybe, I was the vice principal, so about 12 years ago, where there was a fire pull. The alarm was pulled, and it was minus 35.
The providers, wouldn't you have a muster point somewhere on there?
In the field, we go to the field.
Yeah.
But we have to wait until the fire department comes to clear the building before we can enter.
Yeah.
So we were in the field for more than 20 minutes, 25 minutes before they finally said, go to the gym. But they couldn't let us go back in the building. If there was something happening in the building, or there was a fire, the fire trucks would be there, the police officers would be there, the ambulance would be, we would have to snake our way from the south, north, to where the, through the parking lot, to where the lights are, and then cross.
So if you had the trail, you'd still have to sneak by all those trucks, right?
No, we would go directly north. There's an entrance halfway down the school property that takes us to the trail. Because we part, we go to the south end of the school.
And has Seven Oaks indicated whether or not they would contribute to rebuilding this trail?
No.
They have not indicated, or they've said no?
They haven't indicated.
Okay. So I, as it's an emergency for Seven Oaks School Division, if we want to rebuild this, I would, my ask also would be for Seven Oaks to contribute in some way to that.
To the building.
Because we do have a trail system, so now we're rebuilding a trail system specifically for the school. So I would hope that the school would want to contribute something to that.
I don't think you're building it just for the school. I think you're building it for our community.
We're building it for the community, but we have a trail on the other side for the community. So we're not just building it for the community. You're coming here on the basis that it is an emergency situation. So I would hope that your concerns for safety would be backed up a little bit with some funding as well. I'm just asking.
That, of course, would go to the superintendent.
Yeah. The other, I guess the other issue is the MI issue. If they've ripped up our trails, then there's, should, I don't know if there's gonna be some responsibility there for them to put some, something back, money-wise. They may or they may not. And then the other issue for me, Mayor, is that they're not finished. So if we start putting in a trail and they expand even further, then they're just gonna rip everything out that we put in. So that's a concern for me as well. But I'm not opposed to the trail. I just think that we need to have, we need to partner with a couple of people to get it done, because we've already paid for it once. So let's partner to the people that have taken out the trail, to the people that need the trail for emergency purposes. And then we have to come up with some kind of plan. These people all have to give us a right-of-way to come across their property. That's the other issue, right? So they all have to be in favor of it. And I don't want to put it in and have it ripped out, because that's not an effective way of doing things.
I agree with you on that.
Yeah, sorry.
I do also agree that if it doesn't get done, and there is a fire, and we have 600 children walk through some smoke, you'll all be looking for jobs.
Yeah, I agree with you. That's, but it's, it's, we have to think about a lot of different factors when we do this as well.
I understand that.
If I can add to that comment, and that's what I was, I did a quick professional typed-up copy, handwritten. I did a quick draft of all the 12 homes along here, of what the frontage is. So, so just a price comparison, because we did do in front of Monte Carlo dealership, I can't remember what the footage of that was across. But the divided highway already goes past almost four or five homes. So we know what that section is. Talking to MI this past week, that's gonna be coming to the school discussion, they're thinking again, you guys will know the same thing as me, or it's still a question mark. 2020, two years from now, he thinks probably that they might be doing a phase two, going from Baldor Stone North right to River Springs is what he advised. So it's a big, long stretch. He's now aware, and he's aware if we get this first section rebuilt, that little section that we lost, that when they do phase two, they'll allocate that in their engineer plans that there's a trail rebuilt on this section, on the southern part that we lost, because the northern part's still there. Because I think Mr. Ingram had said that he had walked from the school, and he was able to walk, I think, three or four, one, two, three, two homes, one lot, and two more homes. And then it stops. The snow blowing stops right there from the public works.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a way to do this, Mr. Paul always. I mean, we have to coordinate with MI.
Yeah.
They have to give us sort of coordinates as to where they're gonna be going, as to where we're gonna put a trail. That's very important.
So we're not gonna get, we're not gonna loss, not, loss cost for the trail section we're asking to be rebuilt, because that divided section already occurred. So they're not gonna be touching that section again. And when they do phase two, then they're gonna affect the second part of our section. But they're aware of it now, after discussions with them and more so with the meeting for tomorrow. So that's what I'm proposing. If we can somehow get something done prior to that, so we, they showed the intent that the RM does want to have that trail section rebuilt. And what I'm proposing to, like I know Counselor Bichetti had mentioned the time factor to get the east side section done, getting the permission from MI and such. Wondering, we don't want to wait that long. If something happens over the next little while, the public works of the RM is going already so far from the school, they're coming so far, and then they stop halfway. Would it be possible for them to just go on grass sections for that time? If we or the RM approached the residents there, that the ones that showed positively that they want to get something happening? And I know the ground's frozen. Would we be able to lift up that track a little bit and then blow the snow? So that way, the kids still have access for the bounce of January and February? It would be different when the snow's melting, because it would be sloppy then. But just for those winter months, to do something like that? Just a suggestion also to, something on a short term, for now.
Any other questions? Counselor?
Yeah, thank you very much for coming in for your presentation. You know, obviously, it's a concern of mine. I, you know, I pick up my, my son every day from the school. I do see kids walking on the, on the road, you know, I have seen it. And, you know, I looked into it and found out why, right? So yeah, it's very concerning, because, you know, kids are kids, and people are usually distracted drivers as well. So that is concerning that children are walking so close to vehicles to me. So it's good to hear about the emergency plan, and, you know, some things that I didn't, that I didn't know. It's good to, good to always find out new things. And it should be really interesting to hear what MI has to tell you guys. So hopefully, you guys can share that with us in an email or something afterwards as well, so that we kind of keep in the loop. So I'm, you know, I'm in favor of trying to help with whatever way we can, obviously. And so, yeah, hopefully, we can get something going.
Can I just make a comment?
Pardon?
With your meeting with MI tomorrow, if you want to set up another meeting, that it could be council with the trails, yourself, Mr. Ingram, and MI, so that we're all in the same room and we're all on the same page. Because it seems like it's been years, and we knew, you know, because the way it's been done, it's, there's always one person missing from the room, and then it gets lost in translation. Just to get everyone in the same room and have the same vision and picture, so moving forward.
Any other comments?
Okay, thank you for your... Can I add one more comment then? Sorry. I know, because you guys are in budget costs at times. Wondering if you can then take a look at your numbers when you're getting your heads together and planning out what you're gonna spend for this year. Is the possibility of, again, just a short-term, just a little bit of a path to clear the rest of the snow, just for the next couple of months? And then maybe request in your budget an engineer report? Because an engineer study has to be done for the little section of the trail missing. So if you can include that cost maybe within your budget talks? So that way, we can have an engineer study done. And that way, it's quicker turnaround time to get the actual work done. Suggestion.
Okay, thank you very much for, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for hearing me.
So we'll move to item 19, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. 19.1, 19.1, going to go to camera. Be resolved in accordance with section 1153 of the Municipal Act. Counsel does now move in camera to discuss legal matters. Be further resolved in accordance with section 831D of the Municipal Act. Any issues that are discussed are kept confidential until discussed at a regular meeting of council. Can I call for the mover, please?
I'll move.
Counselor Quiber moves, seconded by Counselor Bichetti. All in, call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carry. Be resolved that Council of Municipalities of West St. Paul approves that 2021 draft of the financial statements. Can I remove it, please?
I'll move.
Counselor Campbell moves, Counselor Bichetti seconds it. Any comments, questions? Hearing none? Call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Favor?
All opposed? All carried. We're going now to 10.1. The count.
Information?
Yeah, for information, we go down to 10.22. Also received as information comes payroll monthly statements. Be resolved that the payroll of the month of December as follows, be presented. We have the numbers in front of you, so I call for...
I'll move it, I'll move it, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Packham moves it, can I second it?
I'll count, I'll second.
Any comments, questions? Hearing none? Okay, so we call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? Carry. Okay, monthly statements? Hearing none? CAO's report? The CAO's report? Any questions? Okay, trying to do the resolution here, you guys have seen it. Be resolved that Council of Municipalities of West St. Paul accept the CAO's report as information. Can I ask for a mover, please? Counselor Bichetti moves.
I'll second it, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Packham seconds it. Any questions, comments? None? Okay, can I call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all opposed? None? Carry. Okay, number 14. Miscellaneous correspondence for the month. Be resolved that the Council of Municipalities of West St. Paul accept the miscellaneous correspondence of the month of December as information. Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Bichetti moves, can I have a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Packham seconds it. Any, okay, any questions, comments? Hearing none? Can I call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None? Carried. Next is...
Miscellaneous meeting dates?
Now, 14.2, Mr. Mayor.
14.2?
Correct.
Yeah. Received as information? 14.3? Received as information? 14 points, excuse me, 15, business, general business, 15.1? Be resolved that the Council of Municipalities of West St. Paul authorized attendance at the following meetings. October 19th meeting with the RCMP, Mayor and CEO, Counselor Bichetti, and December 12th meeting, Mayor Trudgen.
Can I, can I ask a question, Mayor?
Well, you go ahead.
Counselor Bichetti, what was that October 19th meeting about?
I got names, that's the camera system that I was talking about for the communities.
Oh, I see.
Bringing it up with the RCMP to see if there was any legal implications if the RM goes ahead and does that. And he brought me some brochures, I guess, from other municipalities that have done it from different companies.
Okay, so something we should...
Just tried, just started, trying to start something to...
I just have a comment on that also. It's kind of, it's interesting, because I, not to you, just in general. I had asked the RM, I think I had sent the CEO an email just because residents and legends wanted to get something saying about, you know, the area is protected by cameras or monitored by cameras or something, right? And the response, if we go back to legal, was something like, we couldn't word it like that, or something illegal, that we had to change the wording of the signs. And I, you know, I talked to my residents, and they said, oh.
Yeah, well, part of the issue is we can't say we're recording if we're not. That's, that wouldn't be truthful. But certainly, if we have a system in place, we could look at the proper signage that would be required.
But the reason I say that, sorry, is most, I'd say 80% of residents in Legends have cameras on the road, right? That's where that kind of, it is truthful.
Yeah, we wanted to suggest like a rural crime watch area or...
Those signs don't do anything, you know, they're, they're almost, you know, it's a waste of money, really, right? To have those signs only say that, in my opinion.
But can they not post their own signs that their house is under surveillance?
Uh, but...
Because we're not really surveilling them, right? Government's not really surveilling them.
No, but if we don't say the arm of West St. Paul, we just say this area, right? Has video surveillance? It's truthful in that matter.
Yeah.
Actually, well, it's something we can discuss at budget.
Counselor?
I did contact that company to call administration to set up a delegation to come to council so that they could explain, because they're doing a pilot project with another community. So it's perfect timing to go and see us on that.
There we go. Okay.
Thank you.
So the December 12th meeting, the CAO was present at that meeting also?
I can note that, but it's not required for the reservation.
Okay. Counsel 52?
We have a merger and a...
Oh.
Secondary on that? No, need a mover and a secondary.
I'll so move.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Call for the question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carry. The AM meeting. Be resolved that all members of council be authorized to attend the AM district visit in West St. Paul on September, February 16th at 2:00 PM. Can I call for a motion, please?
I'll move it, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Packham moves it. Can I have a secondary? Counselor Campbell seconded it.
Can I speak to this, Mayor?
Yes, why, please?
Okay, a couple of problems. Well, February 15th is a Wednesday, I believe, right? Yep.
16th is Thursday.
15th is a Wednesday. Will you be able to attend, Mr. Packham?
I, I, no. At 2:00, I wouldn't.
At 4:00?
Oh, at 4:00, I thought it said 2:00.
At 2:00.
So here's the problem, the residents...
So here's the problem, the, the res- the, the resolution says February sixteenth at two o'clock, and the letter says February fifteenth at four o'clock. If you look, there's an attached email, council wasn't, uh, able to accommodate that first meeting date, so the date they requested was February sixteenth. So we reached out to AM and were agreeable to that, and that's what we've brought forward.
Do we have a meeting that day? No.
Nope.
Okay, so would we zoom that, or would we have to?
It would be in person.
Would you, w-?
Uh, if, if you need, uh, we can accommodate Zoom.
Um, well, I'm just wondering, everybody's working, so are we gonna be here, be able to make that one? Is that a four, two o'clock meeting, right?
Two PM.
Can we hear from council whether or not they can be here in person at two o'clock?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to make it.
Mayor's not able to make it. Counselor Bichetti, would you be able to make it?
Just looking, give me one second, please.
This is the date that council provided us.
I know. My, my schedule's a little bit more flexible, but I'm wondering if we should just zoom that one. Would you be able to attend by Zoom? Counselor Packham? Or no?
Uh, I have to check. It's at two o'clock. Oh, double check.
Yeah, if we can have an option of Zoom, I mean, it's in the middle of the day for me, I have to leave the office and come down here. Uh, and I think everybody would have to do that, so. I don't know, uh, Counselor Campbell, what about you?
I'm available.
You're available?
Yep.
I'm available.
Yeah.
So this is a Thursday?
Yeah, it's a Thursday.
I would have to make myself available, but.
And a reminder that the council does have an, an educational briefing that evening at six PM.
Okay.
So we're all back, yeah, I thought we had a meeting that day.
Yeah, I'll also gonna try and make myself available.
Okay, so if we can.
You just move it.
We can have the Zoom option, I think that would be great.
Yeah.
Yep, that would be fine.
Okay, can I call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, Carrie. Uh, next one is fifty-three. Be resolved that the council of the municipality of Winnipeg approved this schedule for the twenty twenty-three meeting. Can I have a mover please? Counselor Bichetti moves, can I have a second or please?
I'll second, um.
Counselor Campbell seconds it.
Can we have some adjustments to the schedule? Um, I'm just, uh, we had, we had talked about as council, having the committee of the whole before the planning meeting as something that we could use to, uh, discuss items before they came to the planning meeting, to shorten the planning meeting. And I see that there's a couple of dates where the planning meeting's first and the committee meeting's second. So, I'm wondering if we can, uh, bump them to that same week, so we can have the committee of the whole on Tuesday and have the planning on the Thursday. I think there's only, like, there's one, uh, two, one, one, two, three of them? And otherwise, four of them. Cause we're, we were trying to use it as a precursor to the regular meeting and to try to get through some items, so we didn't have to drag out a regular planning meeting. Any, any comments on that, you guys?
I agree with that, makes sense.
I can update that schedule, yeah?
And maybe in our, or, when we do our organizational bylaw, we could, uh, put in there that the committee of the whole is the Tuesday before the planning meeting, rather than picking the second Tuesday or whatever.
Yeah, we can update that.
Or we can do it like that, and then that way we always have it as that precursor to their meeting.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Are, sorry, are we all, or?
Go ahead.
Are you able to, uh, update, once we finalize this, update, uh, the calendars then? Like, uh, our email calendars?
I, I would, I would have to check who organized your, your calendar. Um, but, it, it would depend who the, the meeting invite had gone from, I don't believe it's from my calendar, so.
Oh, okay, I, I don't, I'm not sure, I just, I know I, like, right now, it's nice, right, I.
Yeah, it, outside of this, get in touch with me and we can sort that out.
Sure.
You can go off, want, you, you wanna call for the question?
Yeah, call for the question please, all, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, none, Carrie. Okay, administration report, uh, fourteen fifteen.
Fifteen four?
Fifty point four.
Fifteen four, yeah. So, uh, be resolved that council of the municipality of Winnipeg denied requested council the tax penalty of hundred twenty-five dollars and sixty-three cents on CT two nine seven one one six nine. Can I have a motion please?
Some of.
A mover?
Some of.
Some moved by Counselor Packham, can I second her? Counselor Campbell seconds it. So someone, uh, is asking for a tax cancellation here. Normally I brought it to council so that they can look at it and we can get back to the gentleman and let him know our decision.
Mayor, um, to, may, may we ask, um, our acting CAO, or our new acting CEO, t- uh, to comment on this, on this file?
I certainly can.
Yeah.
Um, so I've prepared, it, we've prepared the administration report outlining, uh, what had happened. Uh, property owners requesting a refund of tax penalties that accrued on their tax rule account for a late payment. So I've provided council, um, some analysis, uh, giving you the legislation that we follow, which is, um, both under the municipal act and our municipalities' tax levy bylaw. Under the tax levy bylaw, uh, we charge one and a quarter percent, uh, penalty calculated at the first of the month, um, pardon me, an amount calculated, a rate of one point two five percent per month until taxes are paid. Um, and the municipal act, um, gives us some guidance here about how we can cancel or reduce the taxes of the property, and they're specifically related, um, to changes in the tax rule. So that means if your assessment is decreased, that would have a flow-through effect of reducing your tax account. We cannot cancel the taxes for any other reason than an adjustment to the assessment. We cannot, by the municipal act, have any jurisdiction to cancel a penalty that's been accrued, um, through our bylaws. So we would recommend that you deny the request.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Just a comment, this has come to us before for this, and I think we're opening it kind of worms, it's, it's, they, they give a multiple deadlines by email blast if you're using, you know, paying electronically, have it paid by this date, stating how many days there is that it takes at the bank to clear. Um, we've had, in the, the time I've been on, we've had multiple come up, and I don't think it was ever accepted. Just for some background.
Tom?
Question? Call the question.
Uh, pardon, question?
Yeah, I can call the question.
Oh, yes, call the question, uh, thanks, and all in.
So we're, we're voting to not cancel this, according to the resolution?
To deny the request.
Yeah, to deny the request.
So, okay, so, all, okay, call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, can, okay, Carrie.
Capital region planning, capital.
Fifty-five, yes, okay, fifty-five. Okay, whereas section eight of our planning act established a capital planning region which includes the city of Winnipeg and the city of Salt Harbor, the town of Niverville, the town of Stonewall, the village of Dunatar, and the rural municipalities of Cartier, East Saint Paul, Headonlea, McDonald, Rocherwood, Rockwood, Rossers, Flegfield, St. Andrews, St. Clements, St. Francis Xavier, Tache, and West Saint Paul. And whereas the section three one of the capital planning region regulation provides that the head of council of each regional member municipality is appointed to the regional planning board. Now therefore be resolved that the council of the rural municipality of Winnipeg approve Miss, Mayor Trugent's appointment to the regional planning board. And further be it resolved that the rural municipality of West Penna- rural municipality of West Saint Paul assumes all costs associated with Mayor Trugent's responsibility with the regional planning board. Can I have a mover?
So move.
Remove, Counselor Calley moves it, Counselor Bichetti seconds it, any discussions?
Question, do they want an alternate on there, and just, uh?
Not, no, it's only for mayors that, okay, not that I've seen that there's alternate. Any other questions? Okay, all in, can I call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Carrie. Um, okay, Cartier Regional?
I missed Red River.
Fifty point six.
Okay. Whereas the Red River Planning District held a regular board meeting on November sixteen, at which time Mayor Trugent was appointed a chairperson of the RRPD executive committee. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the municipality of West Saint Paul approved Mayor Trugent's appointment as chairman of the RRPD executive committee. And further be it resolved that the rural municipality of West Saint Paul assume all costs associated with Mayor Trugent's responsibility as chairperson of the RRPD executive committee for the year of twenty twenty-three. Can I have a mover please?
Move.
Counselor Campbell moves.
Second it.
Packham seconds it, any comments? No, take, I call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven fifteen seven, whereas the Cartier Regional Water Cooperative held a regular board meeting on December twentieth, at which time Mayor Trugent was appointed as a member of the Cartier Regional Water Cooperative Personal Management Committee. Now therefore be resolved that the council of the rural municipality of West Saint Paul approved Mayor Trugent's appointment to the personal and management personnel and management committee. And further be it resolved that the rural municipality of West Saint Paul assumes all costs associated with Mayor Trugent's responsibility as a member of the rural, of the Cartier Regional Water Cooperative Personnel and Management Committee for the year of twenty twenty-three. Can I have a mover please?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Packham moves, Counselor Clyburn seconds it, any discussions? Hearing none, I call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oops, sorry, did you have a discussion?
Uh, no, I, I will do for anybody that's.
Oh, okay, sorry, okay. Yeah, all, uh, all in favor, aye, Carrie. Okay, appointment of notches weeds inspector. Be it resolved that the committee of the rural municipality of West Saint Paul appoint Terry Ferguson as a municipal notches weed inspector. Can I have a mover please?
Move.
Move, okay, Counselor Bichetti moves, Counselor Campbell seconds it, any comments, questions, comments? None, hearing none, I call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, none, Carrie. Uh, appointment, or annual reappointment of fire department members. I'm not gonna read all the names, I'll just say here, resolve that the council of rural municipality of West Saint Paul reappoint the following members of the West Saint Paul Fire Department, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
There's lots, there's thirty something.
Thirty-three or thirty-four, I thought.
Forty, okay, thirty-three to forty names, uh, got, uh.
As listed, just say as listed.
As listed, uh, can I, anyone got any comments, questions? No, can I call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah, we forgot that part, way to go, guys.
Too many times in a row, right?
We'll get it right eventually, like.
Fifteen ten?
Fifteen ten. Appointment of the tax manager. Be resolved that the council of the rural municipality of West Saint Paul purs- pursuing to bylaw number two zero one one dash zero one of the rural municipality of Saint West Saint Paul appoint TAX Service Incorporated to conduct tax sales for the rural municipality of West Saint Paul. Be it further resolved that bylaw number two zero one one dash zero one of the rural municipality of West Saint Paul, Donna Sin-
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President of Tax Service Incorporated, be appointed tax sales manager for the rural municipality of West Saint Paul. Can I have a mover please?
Some moved.
Uh, Counselor Packham moves, Counselor Clyburn?
Second.
Seconds it, any comments? Can I call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, none, Carrie. Oh, okay, tax sale date. Whereas section three six five of the rural, of the municipal act provides that council must offer a sale by auction every property in the municipality that has tax in arrears for the designated year and meets the criteria for sale by auction established by regulation. And whereas section three six five two of the municipal act provides that council may designate the immediate preceding year or any earlier year as the year for which properties, the taxes in respect which, of which are in arrears for the year must be offered for sale by auction to recover the tax arrears and cost. Now therefore be it resolved that the designated year for which properties and arrears be offered for sale by auction be two zero two two, meaning all properties with outstanding taxes for the year of twenty twenty-one or prior. And further be it resolved that in accordance with section three, uh, section three six three of the municipal act shall be the actual cost incurred for each parcel listed for the twenty twenty-three tax sale plus administration fees of fifty dollars as less as the province in Manitoba. Be it further resolved that the tax sale be held October eighteen, twenty twenty-three at two PM. Can I ask, Counselor Campbell moves, can I have a second or?
Second it.
Call, Packham seconds it, any comments? Take call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Take Carrie. And, tax sale, okay, fifteen twelve, right? Oh, be it resolved that the council of the rural municipality of Winnipeg waived the access center facility rental fees for the proposed event as follows. Uh, you have the list in front of you, so I'll call for the motion.
Uh, I'll second it. I'll second it.
Counselor Packham moves it, Counselor Packham, sorry, Bichetti moves it, sorry. Counselor Packham seconds it, right. Any, uh, comments, questions?
Yeah, I, I have a quid, a question on Red River Basin Commission on their gala dinner. Um, wh- why is there so much higher than some of the other ones? Why is there sixteen hundred? Is that cause they're using the kitchen?
Uh, because it's a licensed event and they are not a resident of the municipality.
Oh, okay. All right, and we have a, um, always, uh, waived that, have we not?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the fish dinner.
That's the fish dinner, yeah.
Yeah, I know, it's called gala there, but it's, it's.
It's the fish dinner, yeah, I thought so, okay.
Uh, any more comments? Okay, can I call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, none, Carrie. Fifteen, yeah, engine brake retarder, be it resolved that council of the rural municipality of West Saint Paul requests Manitoba transportation and infrastructure to install engine retarder brake prohibited signs on Holmes Road. Be it further resolved that the signs be installed at the expense of the rural municipality of Winnipeg.
West Saint Paul.
Or West Saint Paul, sorry, the rural municipality, oh, it's not even that.
The rural municipality, so just.
Yes.
Yeah.
Rural municipality, of course. Uh, can I, can I have a mover for this, please?
Sorry, I just have a question, where, where did this, uh, request come from?
Yeah, we have to move and second it before we can discuss.
You said, counsel, okay, any comments, questions?
Uh, yeah, so, where did this request, uh, come from?
Yes, so we've had a few, uh, requests for service complaints about the, uh, noise of engine retarder brakes in that area from the residents. So we thought, uh, we'd bring this forward for a council resolution, um, so that we could resolve the complaint one way or the other.
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I, you know, I, I hear them too, cause that's right where I am. I, I feel, I don't feel it's Holmes Road, I feel it's the perimeter, right, that is, that is the, uh, person, the viol- the violator here, so I, I I've talked to, you know, I've talked to some people that have looked at this on the agenda, and they're like, you know, there's probably eight, you know, real big trucks that use. this on the agenda and they're like, you know, there's probably eight, you know, real big trucks that use that, you know, Blackstone, uh, the towing company. There's very few that, yeah, they're not, you know.
If, if council wishes, we could add, um, the hi- Highway one oh one to the reservation?
I would like to see that myself.
Um, can you, can somebody, one of you gentlemen explain to me what this is, engine retarder brakes?
Yeah.
It's one of the semis?
Uh, yeah, semi is.
When they do that, shh.
Instead of hitting your brakes, you're actually putting the pressure back on the engine and it's giving the exhaust sound.
And it makes that sound?
Put the revving.
Oh, okay.
It's downshifting, right?
It's not downshifting.
Literally opening the, shutting the valves and making the engine slow the en- slow the truck down.
You're not, you're not changing gears in the transmission, it's, uh, it's, yeah, it's closing the, the engine off and kicking the valves open, out the exhaust.
So would there be any trucks like that going down Holmes Road?
Well, that's what I'm saying, there's like, there's, there's very few that, you know, there's Blackstone Contracting, like I, he, he phoned me about it and he's like, you know, Peter, but, you know, nobody goes fast enough. And he goes, nobody, he goes, it's the perimeter that they're hearing, not not Holmes Road.
Yeah.
And I, and I agree with that. Like I, you know, anytime I'm out on my back deck, that's all I hear all night. And usually around city settings, they already have signs up that, you know, so that D O T or the R C P can enforce and give tickets for that. Uh, like, I know one time when we went to Vegas racing, one of my buddies, uh, well, actually, he's the public works managers, his dad in St. Andrews, he got a ticket when we were going through Vegas for using his semi brakes, uh, through, uh, a populated area.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We have those, those signs around Main Street, they're.
They don't do anything.
They're using them, they're using them.
So you wanna amend this to what signs on where?
Uh, I, I think they're only needed on one oh one personally, but I don't think.
But that's not our jurisdiction.
Yeah, that's not our jurisdiction, so that's why we can't really.
We can make the application to M I.
Okay.
Uh, they would have to install the, the signs and it would be at our expense, but we can certainly make the request.
I'm def- I'm definitely good with that, yeah.
So to change from Holmes Road to Highway one oh one?
Yeah.
I, I personally don't think they're going fast enough on Holmes Road to even use their retarder brakes. It would start, it would, uh, almost slow the engine.
So should we put Highway one oh one adjacent to Holmes Road? So that's specific?
For sure, yeah. Uh, no, uh, east and west. So Garden, Garden View also.
So Highway one oh one adjacent to Holmes Road's east and west side?
We should almost put the, yeah, we should almost put them, the, the boundary of West St. Paul from, you know, Main.
One oh one river to the board, to the boundaries.
So within the boundaries of the municipality?
Yeah.
Okay, so noted.
Yeah, just a good, uh, like by, well, main line or secure to the river.
How many signs would that be?
Whatever.
Probably four.
Four signs.
Four each way.
Yeah.
As soon as they're up, then you can actually enforce it.
Yeah.
Correct.
So do I have to reread the resolution?
Uh, no, if the mover and second are agreeable to those changes, then.
Yeah, okay, okay, good. Call for the, any more comments? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. Carrie. Uh, Manitoba Roads Association membership. Uh, fifteen fourteen, be it resolved that the rural, that the council of rural West St. Paul renew its membership with Manitoba Roads Association for the year twenty twenty-three. Uh, be it further resolved that council approved a payment of the twenty twenty-three N G R A membership fee of two hundred dollars. Can I have a mover, please?
I'll move.
Councillor Shetty moves.
I'll second it.
Councillor Packham seconds. Any comments?
Yeah, what is this, Manitoba Roads Association?
I'm watching last night. We don't, do we really know? It's just like they go around and they pick the best yard and that kind of thing?
Uh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, one, one of the things they do, sorry if I can speak on that.
Yeah.
Go ahead, councillor Campbell.
Uh, one of the things, uh, one of the things they do is, uh, it's for equipment operators, they, they do, you know, have a whole lot of gravel roads, but they do, you know, say that they pick the best, you know, gravel road, uh, greater, uh, grader operators, uh, and then, uh, beautification areas, whether it's the R M hall and also, I believe, some resi- residence areas they pick as well.
Yeah, they pick the best yard sometimes, or, yeah, best farm yard, best.
I will add to that if I could, Mr. Mayor, they do offer, uh, training opportunities, uh, for, for operators and to, and things like that.
Okay.
Okay, some value. Okay.
Okay, try call for the question, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. Carrie. Okay, so now we have, uh, question, Carrie, number eighteen. Got any questions? I mean, come forward.
Ellen Mink, ten forty-five, Thomas F. O. The council just finished responding to requests for services regarding retarder brake, brakes. Um, there have been many requests last term, and I'm sure they're ongoing, that bylaw twenty nineteen dash oh seven, um, establishing the maximum speed limit on a highway. Um, that's the municipality's jurisdiction. There, and, uh, I know that the last councils, uh, said that this bylaw would come up for review, for review as a response to people asking that all residential areas, um, have a maximum limit of fifty kilometers per hour. In addition to that, there were other neighborhoods like Whistler Hollow that wanted even less, uh, of a speed limit in their areas. And I, um, I'm asking if there's an intention, uh, that this council will review bylaw twenty nineteen dash zero seven as a result of requests for services. I know they were coming in, um, even near the end of the last term. So I, I was, I wouldn't be surprised if present councillors got those requests again.
So you're asking that, uh, we review the speed limits and lower them down into some of the municipalities, right?
Fifty kilometers for residential areas was what the previous council agreed upon but never did act on changing the bylaw. And just to make you aware, and I'm sure you will be made aware, um, that residents in some neighborhoods think that fifty is too, too much, too fast. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I know there's areas in my, I know there's areas in my ward, Mayor, that are asking for speeding, uh, mitigation, so, some things that we could do for the speeding, so there, that's maybe something we should review as well.
Okay, uh, you make note of it?
I know.
Okay, so that's even what councillor Clyburn had said? Okay. So now we'll go, uh, oh, sorry.
Thank you.
What would you guys do with those?
Ah.
Norma Albert, three twelve Evelyn Avenue.
Yeah.
Um, first question is, um, when can we expect to get the answers to our questions, to the earlier questions we asked?
One of them I have already.
Okay, so, uh, that was a great. Now, the other, it was interesting listening to the conversation tonight about, uh, surveillance and camera surveillance. I am concerned about the, uh, microphone in the ceiling of the reception area here in the, uh, in the R M office. So it's quite clear in the, uh, criminal code that audio surveillance is not permitted. Uh, Canadian case law has well established that, and I think you would all probably from just watching T V, if not reading the criminal code, you know that, uh, if there is audio surveillance, there certainly is not a sign there beside the phone saying, oh, by the way, we're bugging your phone right now. So it doesn't matter how many signs you put around to say that there is audio surveillance. It's not allowed unless it comes from an order from court. And so I'm concerned about that, and I'd like to know when the microphone will be removed from the reception area.
Okay. Sorry, just go ahead, councillor Campbell.
I do remember that's a safety issue. They've had, uh, they've had.
It's against the criminal code.
Yeah, and if you could email me that, that'd be, that'd be really interesting to see that.
Or you can check with the Maldives, they'll be able to tell.
I, uh, I would rather you email it to me, but, uh, it, it is, I know the staff here has been threatened before, so it is a, it is a safety item. They've had people that have been banned from being in the building from the threats that have been recorded on there.
So I'll leave that one.
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll redo it.
Thank you.
Okay, no more, no more questions? Okay, so then we'll go into camera then. Be it, be it resolved that in accordance with section one five two three of the municipal act, council does now move in camera to discuss legal matters and be it further resolved.
Mr. Mayor, did you wanna change that to personnel?
Personnel, okay, to discuss personnel matters?
All right.
Be it resolved, further resolved that in accordance with subsection eight three one B of the municipal act, any issues that are discussed are kept confidential until discussed at a regular council meeting. Can I have a mover, please? Councillor, uh, Brichetti moves it. Councillor Campbell seconds it. All in, uh,
Favor?
Favor?
Aye.
Aye, call for the question. Aye, all in favor? Okay, whereas the rest, the C E O has provided us with the written notice of his resignation, and whereas the council of the R M of West St. Paul has accepted this resignation, now thereby be it resolved that the C A O's last day of employment is January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three as per the terms of his employment contract.
Record a vote, Mr. Mayor? Record a vote, please?
Okay, record a vote. All in favor? Uh, can I, can I call for the motion?
You need a mover. You need a mover.
Can I mo- can I have a mover, please?
Um, good, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Repeat your hand up so she knows.
Yep. Okay, all opposed? Okay, Carrie.
May you adjourn the meeting?
Yep, adjourn the meeting, uh. Okay, be it resolved that this meeting of council stands adjourned at nine twenty-two P M. Can I have a mover, please?
Some moves.
Okay, councillor Packham moves. Councillor Packham seconds it. Uh, can I have, uh, any comments? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed. Carrie. Thank you very much.